Arcand.
Here.
Lloyd. Apson. Daniels.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
I'd ask you to all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us an agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Still approved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any discussion? All in favor, not seeing none, all in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. And the agenda passes. We also have before us a consent agenda which includes various sundry items that we approve monthly, including donations to the district. And I wanted to just call out a particular list of donations that were really remarkable. There are donations for the Anderson Fox Memorial who was a student at Otter Lake Elementary who recently passed away. And his family in lieu of flowers wanted memorials to go to support, to support his memorial and support the great work that Otter Lake Elementary did. So it's an incredible outpouring of support and we are really grateful. So if I could get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any discussion? Being none, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll. Thompson. Aye. Arcand.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
And the motion passes. We have a consent agenda. It is now the time of our meeting for public forum. There was one request submitted to speak. Public forum allows for three minutes per speaker. Dr. Arcand will be taking time with one minute remaining. It's the orange card, I always forget which color it is. The orange card will be held up. And then with 30 seconds remaining, the yellow card and then the red card when time is up. At the end of three minutes, the gavel will be tapped. Speakers will be called to the microphone and recognized one at a time. Only those individuals who will be recognized will be allowed to speak. School district policy and data privacy laws preclude personnel and student matters or data from being discussed publicly. Dr. Kozmicek.
Thank you Chair Ellison, members of the board. Tonight we celebrate White Bear Lake area school students for state level honors. This month's video honors a long list of students who represented the district in a variety of activities, including state competitions for track and field, softball, choir, and golf. Several students also represented the district at the national level in speech, merit program, and the academic bowl. And one student who was a finalist for the Hennepin Theater Trust Triple Threat Awards. Well done students and thank you to the staff and family members who supported the students along the way. Go Bears and roll the video.[210.93]
We did. Just the right one there. So then you can see again, some of the existing. So you can see the tennis courts in the background. So this was, I think, August of last year. I guess I'll have to jump to that next picture and leave you in suspense until then. But so this is not legible on purpose. So this is just a snippet of the items that the team there is tracking on a weekly basis. So they have over 80 individual tasks in 13 different areas of that project that team is managing. And those teams have their foremen and superintendents that are diving even deeper into those activities. So there's a lot going on. They have approximately 180 plus or minus crew members onsite at any given time. So depending upon roofing activities or concrete pours, that can fluctuate from what we have going that day. But there's a lot of people. So some of the bigger ticket items, we got roofing that should be wrapping up at the end of the June. And then turf fields complete by the end of this fall. We've got exterior glass going on as well as above ceiling inspections. So that doesn't sound very exciting, but above ceiling inspections is kind of like a big kickoff point for construction. Once we get everything done above the ceilings, that's kind of like the, you know, we can start chugging along with the rest of it. And that's when the building's actually going to start looking more like a building from the inside anyway. So on that left picture there, you can see the field house. So they've got all their roofing materials stacked up on the metal decking, the acoustical decking there. And then on that bottom right side of the corner, this is where the big curtain wall systems are going to be going in. But we've got that left out right now just for construction access. We still have a lot of large equipment that needs to go in and out of there. And then you can see the three story in the background. And you can kind of see, we've got a different shot of the Union Steel coming up. But you can actually see it over here as well. So then the right picture is the three story classroom addition. So that one's also a little dated, but most of the roofing is just about wrapped up out there as well. But you can see they've started getting all their exterior windows. They got all the brick. And pretty much anywhere it's gray, they're going to have that metal panel that's coming in as like the accent look for it. And then these two big pieces at the top are the penthouses. So you won't ever see what's going on in there, but if you ever get a chance, go walk through it. It's quite the maze. It's like the nerve center for buildings when you walk through those. Lots of hours go into them, but they never get seen. Picture on the left, so that's looking northeast there, beautiful Bald Eagle Lake in the background. But you can see the stadium. So again, if we had taken that picture today, you'd actually see this thing turning green. So they've got turf going down out there right now. And then once they wrap up with that turf, they'll do their final lift around the track. And then 28 days after that, then they'll start putting down the actual track material. And then they've also got a lot of their rough and final grading for the West Fields and new tennis courts going on. And we've got another shot as well. But you can see in the very north end, the new Luricas Fields going in. So this is actually just south. Actually, you can see it right there. So that's the new concessions building. So you can see the kind of flagship steel at the entrance for that. So they've got, all of that is decked. And then they'll be roofing that at the end of June. And then it should be turning that over at the end of summer here as well. Another shot looking on this left one, looking west towards the new three story. So this is the new Union Steel. So I've got a picture coming up from the inside of that one. It doesn't do it justice, but at how enormous this addition is. And it's going to be gorgeous. But you can see they've got just about all of their roofing done up here. So by the end of June, this will all be balisted out and complete. And then the right photo, we got the Luricas Fields. So they've got all that final graded with their sand. And then they're working on pouring their concrete curb, which is basically the nailer curb for all the turf to come in. So once they get that poured, then we'll put the rock base in, just like at the stadium. And then we'll be doing turf here towards like the probably beginning of fall for the Luricas Fields portion. And a couple ponds in there as well. So then some interior shots there, just a nice clean shot before it gets full of MEP stuff. But the auto shops, so the big overhead doors. And then on the right side, we got the inside, like kind of the learning studio spaces in between to the classrooms. So those are kind of the intermediate areas leading to the classrooms. And there's that photo on the left. So I'm standing, based where this picture was taken is where the temp wall is going to be when it turns over this winter. So there's going to be a temp wall so that we can finish demoing out that middle Union piece because that's going to be extending the Union and cafeteria, and then it goes outside. So this is about right where that temp wall is going to be. And it's actually fish lens because you can't capture it all. But it's a mighty impressive space when you stand in there. And then the right photo, so that's the field house. You can see the acoustic deck see-through right now, which will get covered with roof. So we've got to load all of the roof equipment up there and get it completely roofed out. And then once we do that, then the roof will actually, all the camera, the steel will settle. And then that's when we can finish up the steel on the track. And then we'll start pouring the track and cranking away at the slabs down in that space as well. I think I mentioned it last time, but 136 precast panels with 36,000 pounds of bricks. All right. So then up next is Otter. So we've got a couple kind of blurry photos unfortunately. But that, the precast walls here in the left side, you can see they're the cast and place concrete wall. So you can actually see all their form imprints there. But that's a part of the exterior for the storm shelter. So all of that is wrapped up and they got the steel deliveries coming now. And you can see in all of these pictures at the top of this wall, that's where all the pockets are for all the steel joists. So they're actually working on getting those installed now. And then once they get all their roof joists in and the deck down, then they'll actually be able to roof it and then start working on all of their slab on grade and anything that we have MEP wise below grade there as well. One more shot in there. I think we have a couple interiors. But again, you can see all of the cast and place concrete walls inside that new classroom slash storm shelter addition. And then a little interior shot around the new learning commons, the temp wall, all the way around that learning common. So inside that temp wall, you can see it's all now been demoed out. So you can still see the skylight and tree there in the middle. So that's all cleared out and ready for the new learning common. So they're working on getting all their MEP above ceilings and in walls in this space. And then getting that framed out here shortly. Next up we got is Birch. So there you can see a little shot on the exterior for that classroom pod addition, as well as an interior shot inside that space as well. But they got the roof complete out there. Windows are in, they're fully weather tight. So that's another fun milestone. But they got casework going in as well as all the MEP roughens and as well as finishes actually in some of those spaces. And then we talked about the media center. So they're going to be hanging out in drywall and getting ready for paint there pretty soon, once all the MEPs wrapped up. There you got a little shot of the paint going on the walls, drywall is getting taped, all of the above ceilings done on the left side. And then the casework is in on the right. And once they get the ceiling dropped into that classroom, then they'll start putting in floors. And that one's just about buttoned up. And then our last construction update is for Lake Ayers. So they've got a lot of fire, basically all MEP going in. So they've got fire protection as well as all of their VAVs, their duct work, their plumbing.
AJ, when you say MEP, what does that stand for?
It's Mechanical Electrical Plumbing. Yeah, there's, if you ever look at the front sheet of all the construction documents, it's dedicated to all acronyms. Probably should have got to remember that one. So they got interior wall framing going on in there as well. And then a picture of the exterior, which we won't see, but they got the exterior cast stone going on the outside. If you've driven by there as well. Some of the things that they got coming up, they've got exterior brick, ceiling and soffit framing. And then they'll be working on getting the rest of the areas where they've got additions or renovations on the inside beyond that temp wall. So there's a little shot from the outside. So you can see it's all black right now, which is just the weather barrier. And then they've pretty much wrapped, I think now, all of the precast stone around that bottom. And then I think it gets a metal panel above that or possibly brick above that cast stone to match. And then a nice hooray photo of the last bit of roof going down. And then one last interior shot of the concrete pour back. So that's inside the addition. We have a couple of things, which we'll have, I'm sure, on one of the future ones. So like we talked about the ASE Phase Two, so that's actually starting tomorrow. And then that'll be wrapping up towards the end of August this year. And then Onika Elementary. So that'll be starting September 12th and then wrapping up of August of '23. There we go. Any questions?
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions about the construction update? Dr. Neemaster.
I have a foolish suggestion. It's so fun to watch these and I love to watch architectural stuff on cable. I think we'd have a, you know, a barn burner of a series, maybe. It would be a good fundraiser for the district, our own private channel.
Heck, yeah. That'd be awesome.
It looks cool.
I'd watch it.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Daniels.
I got to take a tour of North Star and it was pretty amazing. And it was really fun to see what's happening up there and can't wait to see some of the other projects. So it's looking good. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much.
All right. We thank AJ, his team with Kross Anderson. There's a big crew of experts managing all of our sites, doing outstanding work. And the team from Wold Architects and Engineers is closely connected to all of it and keeping a really close eye on our projects for us. Later tonight, you'll have a chance to approve bids for the Onika project and then the high school security project.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wold. So up next is our discussion item. So discussion item D1. Oh, my computer just shut down me, pardon me. The overview of Director of Educational Equity and Achievement Position, Mr. Mons.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Kazmercheck. We wanted to just do a brief overview of the position. We've had some questions come up around it. And one of the things we wanted to highlight certainly was what I would say is the most significant material change to the position. And that is the inclusion of oversight of our MTSS English learner programming and our title programming. And those are all programs that are integral to the conversation that you have around how we are directing resources within the district to most directly affect our students who are most at need within our system. And so making sure that we have that alignment in place and that there's a real ability to affect those decisions and programming was something that we thought was very important. And so that's the most significant, you know, change that we've made to the position since it was last filled in the district. And that kind of comes along with what we've seen is just in overall philosophy of trying to ensure that as we're working in all of our roles, but especially in this role and in teaching and learning, that the work that we're doing is directly translating to the building because we know that that's where the student experience actually happens and that's where changes need to be made. And so, you know, it's our hope that there's going to be a renewed focus on really making sure that we're working with our principals to affect these kinds of programming. And, you know, we all get caught up in acronyms. So MTSS, what is that really? That's what we're really talking about there. It's a pot of money that comes together from different funding sources. But title, integration dollars. I'm missing a big one here. Yes, ADSIS, thank you. But they all come together to say, this is the pot of dollars that we have to address the needs of our students who do need additional help to come back up to grade level. And so that's really been the focus here is making sure that we're aligning our systems and working directly with our principals to make sure that we are able to see that happen.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mons? Dr. Neemaster.
I know this reimagined or reimaged position is supervising title programs and ELO and things like that. I guess I'm asking, they were supervised before. So this is a shift of things. It's not like they weren't supervised.
Correct. Yep, that's correct.
So what department were they in before that?
So they're still under the umbrella of teaching and learning. So Jen Babish, our Director of Teaching and Learning, you know, will be working directly, side by side with this individual as colleagues. And there's also going to be an assistant, well, it's not a new position, but an assistant director under this position as well, that will help with oversight of those programs as well. And we'll have, you know, oversight of our, especially our licensed support staff in our building. So when we're thinking about our, the portion of social workers, school psychs and counselors that aren't directly dedicated towards the delivery of special education programming, you know, that's all kind of that umbrella of how do we meet the needs of those students? And so it will still, so both positions will still report up to Dr. Gillespie, who wasn't able to join us this evening. And so they will still remain within teaching and learning. So that part's not a shift.
Thank you. Any other questions from, oh, Dr. Akand.
I just wanted to confirm, when we, this is a director. So normally directors direct and work with staff and not with students. And so I'm assuming that we're going, that that director's role is that rate, that they're not, they don't interact daily with students. And that's kind of a norm in the industry.
Correct. Yeah, so it's not a direct service providing position.
Other questions? Oh, did you have another one, Dr. Neemaster?
I did, but I didn't want to, wanted everybody else to have their turn too. When I look at the previous title for the position, it was the result of quite a few years of equity discussions and planning. It was a commitment to the issues and needs and that were revealed in the equity audit. And that was in, say, 2019. That was reported to us the summer of 2020. And at that point, we approved it and the district made a commitment to a number of activities that were direct engagement with student groups, with parent groups to get more involvement and engagement, especially with our marginalized students. And that group grows yearly. And we've got our gaps to deal with. So that was a big part of the position. And I know that, I went and read through the whole packet that was presented to us in 2020, how we did our equity journey and all the commitments that we made for our Equity and Achievement Team and family engagement that worked with liaisons and, you know, our American Indian Parent Committee. So I'm wondering, where is that fitting in? Because we made a huge commitment and it just kind of got put on pause during COVID because a lot of those groups didn't meet. But the need is there and we did make a commitment, which isn't gone.
Absolutely. And so that commitment still exists in our strategic plan. And that commitment still exists as well within this position. So that's not one of the material changes that I talked about. So this person is still going to be supervising our, it's a mouthful, but our Student, Parent and Community Engagement Coordinator. And then they're also going to be, you know, I mean, it's a significant part of any director's work, but especially the director in this role. However, that being said, we do think that the previous title created some misunderstandings about how that really needs to work to affect genuine positive relationships in that this is one of the examples where we really feel like this is something where we expect that coordinator I referenced for this director as well, to really be working with our program directors and with especially our building principals and our site communities to say, how do we engage and create those kind of authentic opportunities for back and forth dialogue? Because that's where that really happens. And so we'll continue to look at what can we do, you know, district wide to foster that. But that also really needs to be a focus that we see manifest at each of our sites and within each of our programs if we want to have that kind of feedback and engagement with all of our community.
I understand that. I just looked at the lists of things that we had made a commitment to do. And those now maybe can be brought to fruition. And so I'm wondering who is responsible for making sure that all those student and parent and community things happen? So is that our liaisons, our cultural liaisons? Is that this new position? Because it's not really mentioned in the title. And that concerned me because we had some really good things that looked like they were going to get going and then all the face-to-face stuff got stopped.
I would say as, you know, I'm not necessarily the guy that is most involved in that planning. But that being said, and speaking on behalf of Dr. Gillespie to some extent, it just depends on what that thing is that you're referencing. So this person, for instance, the person in this position is going to be responsible for a good deal of that. You know, our teaching and learning department will be to some extent. But even more so, it's the responsibility of our site leaders. And it's part of our site strategic plans as well, those kinds of opportunities for engagement. If there's something specific that you're referring to.
There were a number of specific things that were presented to us. And I guess, and I'm just saying this again, as a mom of an adult kid of color who went through this school district, and I waited for years to see that kind of stuff come to understanding. And it looked like it was really going. So I'd hate to see those things dropped because we did make a commitment that summer and fall of 2020. And then a lot of things changed and just didn't quite, you know, didn't happen. Didn't have the students meeting, the parents. I mean, there was a lot of interruption. But I, but we had a good plan. So I'm hoping that we continue. And I'm just wondering where that responsibility lies.
And I just need to know, you know, what we'd be talking about specifically like that. But I'm sure that Dr. Gillespie can get, you know, can get answers if there's anything specifically that you wanted an update on in that way. You know, I'm not aware of things going by the wayside or having been shelved, for instance.
Ms. Thompson and then Ms. Daniels.
I hear what you're saying and I hear words that we have now hired another person who is going to do things that we're already doing in our district. The title change and the removement of engagement to me is a huge problem because in our equity audit, the students and the parents of color and low socioeconomic status and other marginalized groups in our district don't feel represented in our schools. It hasn't changed since 2020 because COVID has only inflamed the situation. Before, this person's role was to engage with those families and students and to find ways to get them more active into our schools, to involve them in more AP courses and in the same things that our students that are of white race already excel at in our district. Now I see this as somebody we have hired as an institutional person to do things we already have. I mean, we already have three academic achievement specialists in our district. We have three educational equity specialists in our district. We used to have more educational equity specialists, but I noticed, and I'm not sure when the change actually happened. But now we have gone back to cultural liaisons, which we had removed that title from them and named them all educational equity specialists. So we also have three cultural liaisons. And then one other person's title I saw has now changed to our Student, Family and Community Engagement Coordinator. In the past, we also had this position who had made mention that they needed help, but they weren't provided that position. So now I'm, now I'm hearing that we are also hiring this person and an assistant to help them with their work. But we didn't provide that in the past. I mean, isn't that what the assistant director will do?
We already have people doing that work here. We're going to be aligning it differently.
So we aren't hiring another person. We're just shifting.
We're not going to be hiring another person there. I would also just make a couple of notes. We don't have, I'm not aware of any reversion to school liaisons, for instance. So I'm not sure.
We have reclaimed them to all be titled as educational equity specialists, I remember because.
Correct.
Yes. So on the website, from last night to today, last night, they weren't all on there. The cultural liaisons on our Equity and Engagement page, just our educational equity specialists were. Today, when I looked, now all of them are back on there, which they used to be on there. So I'm not sure what happened. But we have them titled as, we have three of them as educational equity specialists. We have three of them titled as a cultural liaisons. And we have one titled as a Student, Family and Community Engagement Coordinator.
Yeah, I don't know about the liaison piece because I'm not sure who manages that particular page. But that's not anything that's changed within our system. So we don't have anyone titled liaison at this point. They are all educational equity specialists. When we worked through those title changes, that was with the input of the staff in those positions.
So how does this position, how does this help provide opportunities to students who have been marginalized within the system in the past? How does this help to ensure equitable access for all? How does this position help to eliminate barriers on race, ethnicity, gender, disability, age, or other protected groups? And how does this ensure that the same rigorous standards for academic performance exist for all students? Now, the way that the title has been changed to me aligns it to not necessarily do all the things that our equity audit had said were things that needed to happen. And I mean, I know that everybody in this district, at least in this room that works in the district, has seen the equity audit, knows what the equity audit was done for, why we did it. And I don't see that happening in this new position. To me, this new position is more of a teaching and learning. We are, we have teaching and learning. We have a data specialist. We have people doing all of those things. So how is this person engaging?
Did you see it in the previous position, Ms. Thompson? Because I'm not sure what you're seeing as the change in that.
Did you say she, this person won't be engaging with our community? They'll be engaging with the staff?
No, that's certainly not the case. What I'm saying is, we want to make sure that that engagement is happening at the site level especially, where we believe that it's most important. This person is absolutely going to be engaging with all of those groups. As I said, the material changes here is with that alignment of adding oversight of those programs that directly impact our most marginalized students and students that are behind. That's the deal. We've, we're not taking anything away in this position. And I can also tell you that we have not decreased staffing in this area, even as we've seen one-time dollars fall off the books. And so that's, that's the case here. We had a number of ads in positions in this area, which I was, which we were very glad to be able to add with one-time dollars. We've found ways to maintain those positions at this point. We've not seen a decrease in staffing within these departments.
Well, I don't think I mentioned that we have decreased the staff. I mean, I.
Oh, it's, I'm sorry. I thought that.
They're all there. I know what we have. I see them. Yeah, I just, I just want. Yeah, I just, I just want to ensure that this person is going to do the work that we set out to do with our equity audit and that they're going to, you know. I would like to be able to see, like, our great construction updates that we get are fantastic. And we get so much information of everything that is happening. And I feel like we had a five-year commitment in 2020, the clock is ticking. And I just would like to know that, once this position starts, we will be getting updates to show and prove that the work is being done.
Well, one thing that I do want to be really clear on, we've been really clear about this for two and a half years now, ever since we originally posted this position for the very first time, that this work isn't done by one person. It's, that's not how any of this works in a system like ours. And so the work that needs to get done, that's every leader's responsibility in this room and outside of this room. That's whose job it is to get that work done. This person is obviously an integral part of making that happen. But that's our entire teaching and learning team working together. That's all of the leadership that we have in the district. It's our community education programming, it's everything that we have doing it. We've known from the outset that if we set one person up to be the person that is equity in the school district, that's not going to be setting somebody up to be successful. So we're very cognizant of that in terms of how we look at the work and how we talk about it.
But that needs to be a teamwork, I agree with that. I, I'm done.
Ms. Daniels?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, it was a title change from engagement to achievement. But, but I'm happy to see that the braiding of some of those oversights, MTSS, EL, title, because having worked in the district, having those things separated sometimes isn't, doesn't build strength in what we need to do with students. And I know for MTSS, one of the components of MTSS is family and, is family and community engagement. I mean, that's the second component. We work really hard at that, we have all along. So I think what you said is that it doesn't belong to one person or one program. It belongs to every single person who works in the district. So I, I'm happy that we have this position, a person in this position. And I have, I'm confident that the hiring committee did the best they could to hire the best candidate that presented themselves for that position. And so I, I want to see that person do some great work with the people that we already have in place in all those positions that Angela mentioned and that we already know have feet on the ground. And, you know, I just, I guess I, I don't feel that because we hired a different person or changed the title, that the work is going to stop or go underground or anything like that. The work is there and we're committed to it through the strategic plan. We're committed to it in our equity promise. So anyway, I just, I'm excited about the braiding of the programs and the braiding of the funding sources because I think there's a lot of strength in that, so thank you.
Are there questions?
I just have one.
Oh, Dr. Arcand.
So I just want to summarize what I heard and tell me if I'm correct. It sounds like this director's job will be to develop the capacity of our leaders and our teachers to go forward because we all need to do this work and not just one person. And so by building our systemic capacity as an organization, especially one of this size, one person cannot do all of it alone. But they can, this person can lead the organization forward, so we all can then move forward as an organization. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Newmaster?
I think my biggest concern was that a piece of it wasn't mentioned in the rewrite. And since we'd made such a commitment and repeated our serious commitment, I was worried that, as has sometimes happened in the past, we go off and we have a wonderful new direction. And I think we've got to keep it, keep on the path, keep going.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we will move on to discussion item D2, the 2022-2023 calendar revision. Ms. Babish.
Good evening, Chair Ellison, members of the board, Dr. Kasmercheck. Dr. Gillespie could not be with us tonight, and so Jen Babish, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. I'd like to propose a revised 2022-2023 calendar. The revised calendar was created with input from the District Calendar Committee and also the local Whiteboro Lake area educators' union. As we mentioned in the last work session, we talked about the importance of job-embedded professional learning for educators during the school year, especially to continue our work with the learning on the science of reading for elementary teachers and for them to be able to continue in their letters training, language essentials for teachers of reading, spelling. In the revised calendar, you will see two additional days for professional learning, October 31st, which would be for early childhood through fifth-grade educators, and then December 21st for early childhood through 12th grade plus. We would utilize these extra days for letters training, continued curriculum work. And for our secondary educators, we would continue the work with curriculum and instruction and also with the work of unifying the high school. In addition to the two extra days, the revised calendar also includes three late starts for secondary, February 15th, March 22nd, and May 17th. For secondary teachers, this would be an additional time for them to engage in professional learning and curriculum during this time. And for our elementary schools, there would be no changes. Buses and schedules would run as usual. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Babish?
I have one, quickly.
All right, Dr. Arcand.
How does this change affect our student contact time for our students in the district?
Yep, so I believe, Dr. Kasmercheck, or?
I don't know, Tim, if you've done the calculation, we still meet the requirements, yeah. Yeah.
That's all I wanted to hear.
We're still well within the requirements.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, Ms., oh, do you have a question? Ms. Daniels?
I was just going to say that the secondary late starts, though, the teachers will be during that time. And I know during the work study, we talked about the new letters training for elementary and when all that wonderful training is going to happen. So they don't have any half-days, right? So they'll be doing it on the, they'll be training for the new reading program during just the regular teacher staff development days with no additional time. But they'll, we're going to fit that in, even though it's a pretty intense training.
Correct, so we would have those extra two days would help us with that letters training on the science of reading.
Right.
And then those late start days would not impact elementary schools, families whatsoever.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, I'm trying to follow the key at the bottom with all the shapes. And so I see for the non-student day, early childhood to five, October 31st, I also see February 10th?
Yes.
But then I don't see one around the 21st. Is that because there's already no school for students and so we didn't need to put the shape around it?
I, I believe so, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I, I heard you say the 21st and I didn't see the shape.
Yep, and this is good for us to check to our shapes to make sure that it, that key is accurate for our families.
Yes. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and now we're moving into agenda item D3, which is the first reading of policies. We do a first reading and a second reading of policies. And we will have this first reading and then they will come back next month for approval. And so the first reading is Policy 210, Policy 413, 424, 704, and 902. Can I get, are there any questions? I'm going to ask for a motion to approve first and then we'll go into discussion. Oh, no, we don't approve, this is discussion. Oh, man, and a school year, my brain is like Swiss cheese. Okay, so any questions about the policies? Okay, seeing none, these will come back for approval in July. We will now move into our operational items. Operational item E1 is to approve the action on tentative agreement 2021-23 contract with SEIU Local 284 Whiteboro Lake Area Schools Extended-Day Program Employees. Mr. Mons.
And it is with great pleasure that I recommend that the board approve this as this is our last collectively bargained group in this cycle to come before the board. And I would like to thank both the bargaining team members on behalf of SEIU Local 284 and my compatriots for the time spent in reaching this agreement. There was a lot of really good conversation at the table. We know that we've got problems to solve there as this is one of the groups where we've got a demand for the service that outstrips our ability to hire. And so we spent a lot of time really collaboratively talking about how can we work together, make sure that we are able to get the best folks that we possibly can into these roles and be able to retain them. So was really appreciative of the problem-solving nature of this round of bargaining.
All right, so you, you've heard the recommended action. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster, any discussion? All right, this will require a roll call vote. I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson, aye, Arcand?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
And the motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move into operational, or, e2, which is Action on Nutrition Services Lunch Prices, 2022-23. And this is Mr. Wald and Ms. Lane.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Ellison. If you recall at the April work session, our Director of Nutritional Services, Bridget Lane, was here and she provided an update on the work of nutritional services, which is some really challenging work during the last two years of school, for sure. She also signaled the potential for price increases for our student lunches as well as our adult lunches. At that time, she was still waiting on some information from both the state and federal government on school lunch programming. Some of that has been clarified, but not all, so I'll turn it over to Bridget and let her present. When she, at the end of her presentation, will recommend to the board that they move to approve the nutritional, the nutrition services lunch prices for the 22-23 school year as Ms. Lane presents.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Chair Ellison, members of the board. As Tim mentioned, we are here to discuss the possibility for some increased meal prices next year. So a little bit of background for you, we, pre-pandemic, were reimbursed for every meal, free, reduced, and paid federally and through state on the National School Lunch Program. During the pandemic, they switched us year-round for two and a half years to different summer programming, the Summer Food Service Program and the Seamless Summer Option, which is what we're on right now. They have given us notice that we are transitioning back. So already this summer, we are back to traditional summer food service programming. And in the fall, we are back to National School Lunch Program. There is a proposal by Governor Walz, he proposed in January, for part of the supplemental budget to include an investment for free breakfast and lunch. As you all probably heard, that's kind of stalled right now, so we are not incredibly hopeful, but there is still a little bit out there. But so why now? Basically, we, it's been four years since we have made any changes. It's been five years since the recommendation, four school years with no price increase. As you have all seen out and about, there are supply chain and product availability issues. Inflation is increasing, they have pretty much told us, expect a probable 10% price increase still next year. Fuel prices are going up and then, of course, labor shortages. And so we have raised our wages to be competitive, but along with that, drivers' wages are going up, manufacturers' and laborers' wages are also all going up, which comes back down into food and supply prices. The tool Tim was mentioning is called the Paid Lunch Equity Tool. It was finally released by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And this tool is to establish a paid meal lunch price. And so it's a targeted weighted average, it's the difference between the federal reimbursement and paid meal prices. Their target price this year is for a $3.31 meal price. Again, it's to ensure that that paid lunch price supports program operations. The max increase can be 10 cents, it can be more. Here is the timeline, so back in 2013-14, we did 5 cents breakfast, 10 cents elementary, 5 cents secondary. Then again in 1617, it was 5 cents across the board. We did lunch only in 1718, 10 cents elementary, 5 cents secondary. And then we had pandemic times hit, so two and a half years at free meals, breakfast and lunch for everyone. And now here we are, four school years later, where we would have probably done 5 or 10 cent price increases, we are now recommending a 25 cent lunch increase for both elementary and secondary meals. A little bit more just on the actual dollars and how that works out. So federally, you can see that we're given certain amounts for each category, paid, reduced, and free. And then we also receive some state funding, so total 55 cents for paid lunches. And then total $3.86 received federally and from the state for reduced and free. Right now, our meal prices are $2.70 elementary and $3. secondary. And they, with the 25 cents proposal, it's $2.95 elementary and $3.25 secondary. To throw more numbers at you, it just kind of adds it together. So again, with 3.86 reduced and free, and then when you put the reimbursement together with the paid meal cost, at our proposed, in the orange, prices, we'd be up to a $3.50 elementary total revenue and $3.80 secondary total revenue, which is still below what the federal and state revenue is. And then interesting to note, and you'll see on the next slide, that throughout the two and a half years of COVID, we were actually receiving $4.56. So it is a significant decrease that we will be seeing when we move back to the National School Lunch Program. So here's the decrease. With the 25 cent proposed price, we would be at $1.06 for paid lunch, elementary decrease, 76 cents secondary decrease, and then 70 cents decrease in just moving from that summer program back to the National School Lunch Program. And that is a total decrease of $900,000 in the course of a year if our meals stay at the current rates that students eating. Again, to put some of those scenarios in, so if our participation stays the same, it's that $900,000 with that 25 cent increase. However, we have to assume if meals are not free, participation is going to go down. And so just putting a modest 10% decrease, we can expect about a $1.18 million just in funding losses. And then if we don't do price increases, we're looking at $1,104,000 at the same participation and then $1,365 if participation goes down and no price increase. So it is a modest impact, but it is still very impactful, $203,000 if we stay at our current levels. And then we'd be $183,000 if we have that anticipated decrease. And then the impact for families, if there's one student eating every single day for the entire school year, $42.25. If there's four children, it'd be about $1 a day, $169, you know, based on every day with those half-days and partial days. So it is an impact, but it is hopefully a modest impact. And we are recommending that breakfast stays the same. We are in kind of the federal threshold already with where they've recommended price increases. And with elementary starting at 7:30, we want to encourage breakfast and we want to keep those kids eating early. And so we're going, our recommendation is to keep the $1.70. We are recommending 25 cents for adults at both breakfast and lunch, and then again, the 25 cent increase at all grade levels.
All right, well, you've heard the recommended action. Is there any questions for Ms. Lane?
I have more of a comment.
Okay, Dr. Arcand.
When I look at the price for the adult meals, I don't know where you can go to get that quality food for that price. So as a, as an adult, you really can't argue with that $4.25 or whatever, that's just the cheapest price. And so I don't have a problem with if we have to increase more there, making sure that our students can get meals. Because I'm always worried about the student in the middle that may not qualify for free and reduced, but yet that puts an extra burden on our families. We've got to make sure, find out that we, find a way to make sure that they get an opportunity to have lunch also.
Any other comments or questions? All right, you've heard the recommended action, could I get a motion to approve?
All moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcand, any further discussion? Second by Dr. Arcand. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson, aye, Arcand.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Neumaster.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. All right, we will move into our next operational item, agenda item E3, Action on the Fiscal Year 2022-23 Preliminary Budget. Mr. Wald and Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board, Dr. Kasburchek. There's really three, three ways we describe our budget. We have the projected budget, which the board passes in February, March every year, and that provides guidelines for us to plan for the upcoming school year, for the next school year. So those are the parameters that the board sets for administration as we begin to plan for the next school year. Then we have the preliminary budget, which we presented in March, and the board approves that in June of every year. And we know that there's, we're working with the information we have today. We don't know our total enrollment when school starts. The legislature has not completed its work, or, well, maybe it has, we don't know. And so there, that may or may not change some revenue forecast for us. And so where we're at today, we know what we know, and that's what our Director of Finance, Andy Johnson, will present today. I'll let her run through a summary of the budget, the same budget that we presented in, in May.
Good evening. As Tim said, we were really hopeful last month that we would be coming forward with better news, but the legislature did not complete their work, and so that makes tonight's presentation for me nice, short and sweet. There's no changes from what we presented in May, so we're asking for you to approve the preliminary budget with, for, I'll just read the general fund, which is the bulk of our operations. Total revenues of $127,224,430, and expenditures of $127,975,183. So it's a deficit of about $750,000, which we did talk about at the May meeting. Included in the packet is the annual operating plan that has some descriptions of the, of the budget, and then the same documents that we presented in May. Are there any questions that you may have?
Any questions for Ms. Johnson? All right. You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Neumaster. Any further discussion? All right, this will require a roll call vote. I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson, aye, Arcand.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Neumaster.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Now we will move into operational item E4, approval to, approve the action on the bid for Onika Elementary Addition in the amount of $5,514. I'm going to try that again. $5,514,11. Mr. Wald.
Thank you. Chair Ellison, earlier tonight, the board heard an update on progress of construction projects around the district. One of the Phase 2 elementary projects that has just recently been, been bid and has yet to be approved by the board and is scheduled to begin construction on September 12th is the Onika Elementary Addition. In the packet tonight is a summary of all of those bids, and we're recommending that the board, well, just note that our team at Kraus Anderson has vetted all of those bids, and they review them, they evaluate whether the companies that have bidded are up for the project, that they have confidence in them, and as long as that's true and they follow up public bid laws, then we approve the lowest bids. And so the Kraus Anderson has vetted all of those, and their recommendation is that we approve the lowest bid. Project total is $5,514,011.
All right, you've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcand. Any discussion or questions? Ms. Thompson.
How did we come in on this one?
Yeah, so through almost all of our other bid openings, we've shared with the board that we, bids have been really pretty positive toward the district, and even early on during some of these inflationary times, that was true. Not true in this one. And so we're fortunate that we were able to save some funds from other projects to redirect to this project. We had, our pre-bid estimates were 5.2 million, and so the bid of 5.5 million was a little higher than we hoped it would be. We had bid some projects as alternates in it, just in case it came in way, way too high for us to be able to move some funds into it. But the alternates came in low enough that we had funds remaining from other projects we were able to reallocate to this.
I'm getting new windows and new doors in my house, and somebody else went through the same company, same amount of product. It is quite a bit more expensive than they have. So I think in the overall scheme of how big this project is, that's not too bad, and we kind of knew it was comfortable.
What we wanted to do was remain consistent with Onika from our other projects, and one of those projects was the Learning Commons being an open area space that's open to the whole building. It feels like the center of learning in the school, and that was a key to this project. We didn't want to lose, and we were able to continue to do that.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion on the table. This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson, aye, Arcand.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Neumaster.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Next up, operational item E5, Action on the Bid for Unified High School Security Package in the Amount of $969,485. Mr. Wald.
Yeah, so the high school security package was separated from our original bids on the high school project, and those were opened on June 7th, and those came in slightly under projected at $9 million, or excuse me, $969,485. I bid was $1,133,770. It's going to be a great security package in that building. We've already implemented the camera systems at several of our sites, and principals are raving about how outstanding the system is. So we'll feel good about our high school being secure, as well as the grounds. We'll have a significant number of cameras on, outside the building as well, with great resolution and then great ability to track movement. So should be a good, good project.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson, aye, Dan, or Arcand.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Neumaster.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. E6, Action on Workers' Compensation Agreement for the 2022-23 in the Amount of $403,859. Mr. Wald.
Yeah, annually, the board approves our workers' compensation insurance. We work with experts from Gallagher Insurance to negotiate prices for us. Administrative Services, RAS, or Risk Administrative Services, has been serving the district since 2014, and they've been through three competitive bidding processes through that time. The recent, just, or the most recent just last year, where they came out again on top. We asked them to give us a bid for this year, and in a very challenging insurance market, we're pleased that we got a, actually, an 8.5% decrease moving forward for next year. Part of that is because our HR office has been really diligent handling claims and getting people back to work right away, so the inju, so they move and their injuries don't linger. Our operations team's been focused on safety, reducing accidents across the district. That's resulted in an experience mod rate of .79, which is significantly low, the lowest that I think we've seen, and maybe, Dr. Kasburchek, I don't know if you've seen lower, but very low experience mod rate. And that's just comparing our injury experience compared to other, others in the same industry. So we look at public schools across Minnesota, we've had significantly less injuries on our site than they've had. And so they've experienced COVID the same as we've had, and we've just come out of it in pretty good shape. So that's a significant decrease for next year, the lowest that it's been in the previous five years. So the recommendation is that the board accept the quote of $403,859 from Risk Administrative Services for Workers' Compensation Insurance, effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Neumaster and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any further discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson, aye, Arcand.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Neumaster.
Aye. And the motion passes. And E7, the Tim Wald Show continues. We are moving to Action on Property and Liability Insurance for 2022-23 in the Amount of $524,092.20.
Well, we wish we were seeing an 8.5% decrease in property and liability insurance, but that's not the case. We're seeing an increase of 3.86%, and from what we understand about the current property and liability industry, that's a very favorable, favorable rate. So the district since 2014 has been members of the Minnesota Insurance Scholastic Trust, also known as MIST, and that organization represents school districts and has been very effective at school districts pooling, pooling their resources and getting rates favorable for school districts. So we'll continue to be, stay as members of MIST because I think we'd be spending a lot more on property and liability insurance if we didn't.
All right, so you've heard the recommended action.
I'll just, one more thing out, my page is stuck together. I want to just share with you, the cyber liability insurance is the single largest area of increase, and districts all the one, and organizations around the country are seeing that. There are less, companies who are willing to insure against cyber liability. And so we sharpen, we work with our insurance agent to keep our protocols and security tight, so that we are less likely to experience cyber attacks. And so we, you know, so we're eligible for insurance. However, we're still seeing a significant price increase. I think that's in the, in the range of $15,000 for next year increase, almost 50% increase in our cyber insurance.
All right, well, you've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Thompson.
Go ahead, Dugle. I have a cousin who works in the industry of cybersecurity, and it is, it is an industry that is getting harder to keep everyone safe, because there are a lot of people out there who are very smart and able to break into systems. And one thing that they had mentioned to me that they would like to see, and I think we have such a robust career pathways program in our district, that when they get individuals that they hire in the industry that she works in, she has to kind of train them in, because they, there is no good schooling system for that. So it really is an area, I think, that we could possibly someday, hopefully, I mean, you know, if the budget works out for us ever soon, hopefully, to try to find a way to, you know, if we could implement that into our career pathways program, I think. And I believe we would have a lot of students who would be interested in that, because they like technology and they're...
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. We continue to develop our technology career pathway program, and so hopefully we get some growth in that area and can offer more and more courses dealing with cybersecurity and data management.
They did mention one of the areas that we struggle in is because we have Chromebooks. In order to properly do the programming, we would need, you know, funding to be able to buy computers. That would actually be one that we...
More secure.
The funding thing.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Ms. Daniels.
I was just going to mention, I'm sure, I don't know if you were sort of implying that maybe we could have our own cybersecurity person. I do know that Sentry has a two-year associate's degree in that, but I'm sure all of that responsibility falls on our great technology team right now, and they just, they really, I know that over the years, they put many, many layers in place to help protect us. So, and we would still have to have the insurance anyway. So it's just more of a comment, not a question.
We have kind of a unsung hero, quiet rock star named Chris Hauptman, who keeps a close eye on that. And when you talk cybersecurity with Chris, he can make you very scared very quickly, when he starts talking, when he talks about all the risks that are out there. But he's on top of it. He has continued to pursue schooling in that area, so he's on top of everything. We're fortunate to have him.
Thank you.
I have one thing. One of the, one of the benefits of being in MIST was that, MIST was one of the, really, the first districts that started to have this coverage was because of that. And I think the strength in being in it now is, if it's harder to get that coverage with such a large pool of districts pooling their resources together, we're probably still an attractive, MIST is still an attractive entity to cover, and so we probably do better than, than an individual district out by themselves looking, which is the benefit of MIST. That's the concept.
Yeah, and they really have, the representatives at MIST have really been great support to us, to ask us all the right questions, things we need to be thinking about regarding cybersecurity. So it's good to be a part of that.
And so this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson, aye, Arcand.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Neumaster.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you. And so next is operational item E8, which is to approve the action on the 2022-23 calendar revision. Ms. Babish.
Chair Ellison, members of the board, earlier tonight, you heard the proposal of the revision of the 2022-2023 calendar, which would include two additional professional learning days and would include three late start days for our secondary schools. I'd like to make the recommendation to approve the revised 2022-2023 calendar.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion? All right, this is a voice vote, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, and the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Operational item E9, Mr. Wald again, operation to, or Ms. Johnson, to approve the action on the Annual Resolution to Increase Micro Purchase Threshold.
Thank you. State and federal statutes currently establish different purchasing thresholds related to contracting and bidding. So the federal statute allows school districts to establish alternate thresholds, as long as the school board annually approves this resolution, which will allow us to follow the state purchasing procedures for all contracting and bidding, regardless of the funding source. So this will impact our title programs, special ed, food service, and then some of our COVID funding as well. It just allows us to have consistency in our methods of when we would go out for sealed bids, when we are required to get two quotes, and when we can just go with a single vendor for purchasing. So this will be effective for our current school year, 21-22, and then our plan will be to bring it back in January, and it'll just be one of the annual resolutions that we would be bringing forward at that time. So our recommendation is to approve the Annual Resolution to Increase the Micro Purchase Threshold.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Neumaster and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thompson, aye, Arcand.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Neumaster.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you. And finally, operational item E10, we're going to approve the action on school board policies. This is a second reading for Policies 418, 420, 509, 612, 649, 701, 702, and 732. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any discussion? We usually approve these in one fell swoop, so all in favor of approving the policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, and the motion passes. And we have now reached the, the time of our meeting for Board Forum. This is an opportunity to, for board members to share what's going on in the district, events and activities and successes. So can anyone have anything to offer for Board Forum?
I do.
Oh. Ms. Daniels and then Dr. Arcand. Ms. Daniels.
Thanks. I just wanted to thank the retirees. I saw we had many, it was earlier, and I watched the slideshow, and I know many of these people have been longstanding employees of the district, and they do good work, and I wish them well, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Dr. Arcand? Dr. Arcand?
I just wanted to give a shout out to Sunrise Middle School. I had the opportunity before the end of the year to visit with them. We know that transitions from elementary to middle school are difficult, and they had set up a program to bring the fifth grade students over with their teachers to go through, walk the halls, you know, work with a lock, do an activity, and that really helps those students to get in there and feel comfortable about that transition from fifth grade to sixth grade. So that was an awesome group effort between the elementaries and Sunrise, so I just wanted to congratulate them for that. That's exciting, and they're doing a great job. The second thing, while I was at the Ramsey County League of Local Governments, I found out that Hockey Day Minnesota will be held at Polar Park this next winter, and the key matchup of the hockey teams will be our White Bear Lake Bears against the Hill Mary Pioneers. So that's exciting, too. That's really a great game to have up there outside, so I hope it's either really warm or really cold. I'm not sure yet, but exciting.
Thank you. Other things for Board Forum. Ms. Thompson.
I was, just concur what Daniels said about our retirees very thankful for the service that they have provided to the district, and just wanted to mention the graduation ceremonies. I had the pleasure of attending four graduation ceremonies last week, three of our own and one for another district. And I just have to say, go Bears, because I really enjoyed our graduation ceremony. So everybody in the district who helps make that happen, and it's just truly an honor and a wonderful experience to sit in that room and watch those students, you know. Having done so well and thoughtful, and the speeches, and it was just truly remarkable, and our students are remarkable. Did I hear them say we had 400-plus students who graduated with honors? Was that, I think that, I want to say that's what I heard, but either way, just, it was amazing, and I just wanted to say it was, it was a wonderful experience once again to be there.
Thank you. And Dr. Newmaster.
I would concur, and I enjoy that our school district has many special celebrations with different groups, and I always make sure that I get to each of them, and they're so personalized, whether it's tech or ALC or the American Indian celebration. It was, it's always an excellent experience. So I think our kids make us proud, and they all have worked hard. This has been a great year in comparison to perhaps the one just before, but they still, it was an adjustment for everybody, and I think they did it with grace, and our staff did too, and everybody, I hope they have an excellent summer. So I also appreciated the use of our building at North Campus. The people were so good at facilitating our Korean dance and drum celebration on Saturday, and we had all kinds of people wandering in, and it was, it was just fun to see people, masks, unmasked, whatever, and there was no conflict. It was just, this is a good community. So thank you all, have a good summer.
And then I guess I'll just finish up by saying thank you to our teachers and staff. It's been a year, and they have just once again moved mountains for our kids, and there's a lot of ways that we'll never see the ways that they have helped our kids. And our paraprofessionals, every single person in each of the buildings has demonstrated what it really takes to educate a child, and it's not just one teacher, it's so many people. And so that includes administration, our district center admin, and I want to give a special thank you to our staff who help our special needs kids. I have a fifth, almost six, going into sixth grade son who has an IEP, and his progress has been, his progress has been incredible, and I give so much of the credit to the staff that just have never given up on him. And I know that that is not the, it's not an unusual situation in our district. And so thank you to everyone. You all work really, really hard. And let's, let's go sit outside in the sunshine now. So enjoy your summer, everyone. Thank you so very much. I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move for an adjournment.
Dr. Arcand, motion and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, and we are adjourned.
Huzzah.